So, you know, one of the things that have been really instrumental in our growth has been even working with Lisa and her team at the charter office and all the feedback that they've done, from the pop-up PDs to just even some of those individual conversations that have come with Lisa and Robert and Felicia and Shakira. And so, kudos to them. So, a lot of the stuff that I'm presenting to the board today is really a collaboration, collaboration of effort in terms of how we can improve and grow for the betterment of our students. So, you know, one of our big pieces in terms of what we've been trying to do, as Lisa said, was, you know, we're really trying to get that NEAS accreditation, which is really the roadmap of how great schools are. And so, within that roadmap is correlates directly with some of the action area items that I'm going to be talking about today, and specifically about the culture and climate and about the test scores. But we know that in order to do those things, there's a lot of other avenues that are in. And NEAS has six different foundational elements that must be in. And so, prior to us applying for NEAS accreditation as a candidate school, we only had two of those six, and really, really maybe only one. And so, one of the things that we're proud, and in our last board meeting, I even presented to the board, was that we have established all six. And so, today, I just want to highlight some of those things quickly for the board to hear, because I think it's a lot of work, which is a culmination of the collaboration with outside stakeholders, such as the State Department of Education and with NEAS, but also with the work that we've done in collaboration with our teachers, parents, and students in our building. So, one of the things is about the survey, you know, with the survey results, one of the foundation is about making sure the school community provides a safe environment. And so, our survey results really made that so. And so, you know, even in these crazy times with the pandemic, you know, our students, 90.5% of our students feel safe in our school. And the majority of those that didn't were right in the middle as I feel neither way. And we had the same thing, 100% of our parents feel that it's safe for their kids, and 96.9% of our staff feel it's safe in this building. In addition, you know, we have established a core values and belief system, and that's a document that was done in collaboration with our teachers and our board, and it was approved by our board in April, and it was part of the candidate process. And with those core values is really how we're going after the behavioral aspect and making sure that all of us, all of us here, are not just treating each other with the respect that we deserve and need in these times, but also that we're still keeping an academic rigorous education while still keeping an eye on that social emotional learning. You know, 97.7% of our students are familiar with these core values. Our staff said that 100% of our staff said that teachers and administration treat each other with respect, and 87.5%, and again, that 12.5% were on the neither, 0% disagreed, but they said that the principal and other administration lead in ways that are consistent with our core values. You know, in terms of making sure that our core values are living, it's also really great to see that our parents, 100% of our parents said they feel welcome, and 100% of our parents say that staff treat them with respect even though they don't know me. You know, and if you ask like where we want to grow, we want to grow with more parental involvement. You know, a growth area for us is how we can increase that parental involvement. You know, when we looked at the survey, you know, 2/3 of our survey, 2/3 of our student population and our families, our Hispanic population, yet we did not get the survey results from our Hispanic population, even though we tried to do it in languages that may have been more comfortable from the take. So, we've actually developed a position here, a stipend position, to do an outreach with our families and really targeting, you know, our population of the Hispanic populations, because maybe they need to hear the message from someone who maybe has that tie with the community. And so, so we've actually established that. So, we're looking to grow that area as well. In terms of student learning, one of the big pieces was, we did not have written curriculum in a common format for every course. And so, today, on our website, you can go to each one of our courses in this school, and now you'll see a year-long written curriculum in a common format for every single course that's offered in this school. That was a big effort and a big piece of what we did this summer. Also, we didn't have an improvement plan. So, in the history of Isaac, there was never an improvement plan written here. And so, we now have an improvement plan. And with that improvement plan, there's a straight line between the board's goals, our school goals, and also the teachers' SLO goals that align with that. All of those goals, including ensuring that our students are learning according to the Common Core so that they're successful on an exam such as S-Back in the future, is part of that plan. So, we're really doing a big job with the curriculum and their writing, and also in terms of our goals and our SLOs and our focus, in terms of even having common assessments that are really tailored towards what kids need to learn in order to be successful on this S-Back exam, that that is now written for our curriculum and also written into our student improvement plan. That piece was part of the action plan that was submitted to the state, and really in collaboration, and the big thank you to Shakira, who's on this call right now. Going back and forth with Shakira and Lisa, I joked with them, the first time I thought I got a C+ on the report, but I think in the end, we really knocked it out of the park, and that has been a really nice goal for us. And it was nice to put that plan into place into our school improvement plan. In addition, we now have PLCs, so professional learning communities, where teachers meet and have a purposeful meeting once a week. They talk about curriculum one week, they talk about their assessment strategies and data, they go on learning walks around the school in a COVID-friendly way, but they observe other teachers and practices, and then talk about that practice, about how they can improve their own practice. We've now put that into place, and so, we're looking to even add to those in terms of adding to that learning walk where they're seeing each other in their own discipline in the future. One of the other pieces was, we now have a new educator development evaluation plan. We saw the opportunity with the commissioners, you know, request of anybody want to adjust their educator evaluation plan to do so. But one of the things that was missing for us was, there wasn't an administrative evaluation and rubric plan. So, we partnered with some local districts and looked at their plans and adopted the Shoreline Framework for Leadership. And so, we embedded that into our plan, and we also made a more robust plan that still aligns to the Common Core of Teaching, but we did submit that to the State of Connecticut for approval at the beginning of the school year. Our SRBI team is another big part. And so, one of the pieces is making sure that we have intervention strategies designed to support learners. And twice a week, we have a team of teachers and emotional support people and administrators that get together and look at every single one of our kids. All 281 students are looked at twice a week, guaranteed. And it's that commitment that we're making sure that no one falls through the cracks and that we continue the engagement. Right now, we have over 52% of our students are in remote learning, and we're making sure that they're engaged. And if they're not engaged, we're knocking on doors, and we're making sure we're finding what are those avenues. Right now, we have 100% connectivity with all of our families. And so, we've utilized the state resources, and are so grateful to you, the board, for allowing for those funds to be put forth so that we can have connectivity for all of our families here at Isaac. And lastly, is making sure that our plan supports the delivery of the curriculum. That's another, that's the last foundational element. But we've made a lot of technological upgrades to deliver the curriculum, but also to be able to deliver the curriculum outside the walls when we have students who are learning remotely. And we've really utilized, again, those state-funded grants from the coronavirus and the ESAR funds to be able to do those things. And so, we're really confident that, you know, we now have the tools. And although this is the most challenging time for any educator in the United States of America, probably in the history of the United States of America, I really feel like we're banding together to do what's best for kids. And we're committed to staying open right now, although, you know, there's some people that want us closed, and I understand that, but we know that in person, that's where it really matters. That's where we can get this work done. So, we're committed to making sure that we're meeting with those students who are remote or in person and making sure it aligns to the curriculum. So, if you're not learning in the building, we're still doing yeoman's work and making sure that those students are still getting the highest quality education as if they are here in the building.
Thank you, Dr. Spira. I'm going to ask my fellow board members if they have questions for Dr. Spira, Erin, Woody, or Bonnie. Woody, go ahead.
Dr. Spira, you said 90.5% of your students feel safe, and that's about 26 kids who don't feel safe. Did you ask them why they don't feel safe?
You know, one, I would love to know who those kids are, right? And so, those are anonymous surveys that I would love to go to them. Now, the other piece is, those other students, none of the students, all the students either were in that neither column. So, they select that I neither say it's true, and I, or neither I say it's untrue. And that's a hard one to say, you know. So, I really don't know. And, you know, some of those students, you know, I would hope that they would talk to us, or maybe that is a student who maybe answered that, who maybe had to go out. Maybe they were forced to be out because they were part of the contact tracing that has been done here. And so, I hope that we have an advisory set up, a small advisory, where we allow for those conversations to occur, that they would speak up to us. And so, we're going to keep on making sure that those relationships happen so that students feel comfortable speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Erin, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Dr. Spira, you had, you listed quite a list of brand-new initiatives for your staff. The curriculum is new, the evaluation plan is new, you now have a school improvement plan, and PLCs. How is this?
One, we're developing some morale with each other. But you're absolutely right. There are some of the teachers that have been here before that were working in silos, and I, you know, I could close my door and not be bothered, who, right now, there's accountability. And so, it is probably a challenge for some of them. But I would ask if it's okay for Denise and Tanya, if you have any comments toward that, working with these teachers directly.
You know, when we started out the year, we had eight days of PD, which is quite a long time. And part of that is, we made sure that all of the things that we were asking of them was delivered in a way that was organized, that they could refer, they each have their own little, you know, Isaac Bible, if you so, you know, so speak, and everything is in there. So, if they ever have to refer back to something, it's provided to them in an organized, fashionable way. Every Wednesday, when we have our faculty meeting via Zoom, because everybody's working remotely, we have a half hour of time that we readdress all of those things. You know, if it's, this week, we're doing learning walks, during that time, we're discussing the reflections about the learning walks. If it's, we're looking at assessments, we utilize that time to discuss these assessments and patterns they're noticing, and are we on the right track towards students moving in the direction that show that they are making growth, and we'll demonstrate that on some kind of standardized test. So, we're always revisiting and going back to it. So, it's never, let's do this, and then you never hear about it again. It is part of everything that we do, and it's all built based upon student learning outcomes, based upon our improvement plan, which is attached to NEAS, which is attached to our action plan. So, it's all intertwined. So, when we meet, we're always bringing it back to how it impacts us as a whole. So...
Thank you. I would just, you know, I know you said you adjusted your evaluation plan. I don't know what particular adjustments, but keep in mind with all these changes for your staff, that I'm hoping that evaluation plan is a helping tool for teachers, because that's going to be most important, that with all these major shifts in one year, especially if you have staff that have not had it for many years and didn't have to be accountable to it, could be difficult. So, as long as it's helping, you know, and I'm sure it is, but I always like to remind, it should be a helping tool. Lisa?
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to add to Erin's question, but also Denise's comments. Communication and messaging is so important. And I thank you for bringing that up and highlighting that. In my review of the survey, there was one point, one of the ones that I would recommend that you take a deeper dive in is, in particular, where I have a role in implementing the school's improvement plan, where only 74% of staff felt as though they had a role in implementing it. It was much higher in the development of it, that they knew what it was, they understood the mission and vision of it. But I just recommend that you work on how the staff see themselves in this school improvement plan. So, that being a part of the messaging there, because a lot of work has been done to align all the different plans, which is great, but we need to make sure that every staff member sees themselves as part of the plan and how they fit in here.
Thank you.
Erin, anything else before I ask Bonnie? Okay. Bonnie, you have any questions? Thank you, Bonnie. I didn't say it officially, that one of our board members, Don Harris, told me that he couldn't attend today because he's doing a meeting with CAPE. He's the chair of the Board of CAPE, so he's doing that this afternoon. I want to thank Dr. Spiro and also his board chair for coming to the meeting. And I want to ask a couple of questions. Dr. Spira, when is the NEAS, when are you going to complete a self-study for NEAS? What is your timeline for NEAS?
Yeah, so, we completed the, it's like, almost like that mini self-study to become a candidate school. So, we received candidacy in April, and then now we'll have a collaborative conference, and that will occur in probably two or three years. It's actually interesting, our accreditation, our full accreditation might coincide almost exactly at the same year that will be up for charter renewal in the four years from now. And so, that same year will be the same year as the accreditation.
Okay. So, it would help both things, and although there are different processes, they will fit into each other. That's, that's good. I am a big believer in the accreditation process. I've done a lot of work and chaired teams in higher education.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, in higher education, for NEAS, for the California, which is west, for middle states. So, I've been all over, I've been to all kinds of schools, you know, and including law schools, believe it or not, and I'm not a lawyer. But so, I do believe that it's really a very helpful process, because it allows the institution, when you do it well, to really do an internal analysis of your strengths and weaknesses. And that's very, very good. One of the issues that we had asked you was to deal with the academics, and I know the fact that you're working with the curriculum, it's part of what you're doing. What else are you doing in terms of the academics of the school for improvement?
Yeah, so I think one of the things is from the instructional model, really modeling what a classroom looks like and what a class looks like. I'm going to ask Tanya to talk about that. She did some of our professional development work with that. But also, you know, we had, even in terms of understanding who's in our classroom, really, knowing about what are some strategies we can do with students that are tier one, tier two, because now the tier two responsibility for interventions is now with the teacher in our classroom. And that's something that Denise also did professional development on. And then also, how are we supporting special ed and ELs? And our EL population, we're now a bilingual school because of the number of Spanish-speaking students in EL we now have in our school. So, part of that was that piece as well. And then also looking at the accountability of how are we assessing students and how are we really using that data to drive our instruction. So, I'm going to ask Tanya, if that's okay, Dr. Lopez, for Tanya to talk about the structure.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tanya. Tanya, you're on mute. Okay, go ahead.
So, we have restructured our day so that instead of having 45-minute blocks that the teachers were used to, we've extended that to 75-minute blocks. So, when you have the extra time, teachers needed training on how to fill that time. So, at the very beginning of school, as Denise was talking about, where we had those eight days of PD, we did a PD also on how to structure the class time to most effectively get the most, I would say, from our students. So, we were following something called workshop model, where we have the do-now, the mini lesson, the work period, and the debrief, all within each class. So, students know when they come in, they have a, people call it bell ringer sometimes, getting students set up for what they're going to be learning that day. Then they have their mini lesson part, where they're just getting their instructions, directions, expectations. Then they have the biggest chunk of time to actually show what they're know, what they know. So, they're in groups, or not in COVID time, but it tended to be that they're working on whatever the skill or task is. And then at the end, have time to go back and discuss whether or not they were able to achieve the objective or not. So, it is a restructuring of their time too, but the more, change is hard, and adult learners, it's difficult for the change. But if you give them the why, you give them the reasoning, the rationale behind the change, they jumped right into it. And so, you can see on 100% of our walls, the objective written for students, 100% do-now spaces. So, the consistency is there across all of the classrooms, vertically and horizontally.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Dr. Spiro, I also applaud you for the, your intent to reach out to the Hispanic parents. I know, knowing my community, that if I get a survey in English without somebody that I know explaining to me what it is, I would totally ignore it. So, I agree with you that you have to have that NEAS. I would also encourage you, when you say you're a bilingual school, that you sort of see that as an opportunity, not as a deficit. Both my daughters went to Puerto Rico in sort of dual-language bilingual schools. And, you know, as you probably know, based on the research that shows that speaking the two languages really allows you to be smarter, you know. And even at my age, the fact that I speak two languages sort of delays us. So, I try to do that for my health every day, you know, and I curse in Spanish, which is more meaningful than in English. But anyway, I'm really looking for models and examples of schools that embrace the fact that they have diverse communities and use the knowledge that they have as an asset and not as a deficit. So, hopefully, you'll be one of those places where we can highlight and show the rest of Connecticut how well you're doing in that area. Again, I appreciate you're coming for us today and telling us what you're doing to address our concerns regarding the corrective action plan. I appreciate that you're working with Lisa and her team. And I want to thank your board chair for being there, and your team for joining us today. I don't know if there's any other questions or any other comments. Lisa, do you have anything else you have?
Thank you. You know, one question that I do have, with so many changes and positive changes happening at Isaac, and the addition of the admin evaluation plan, has anything changed from the board's overseeing of the administrative or the corrective action or school improvement plans? Has their role at all been changed, adapted, or improved in that same spirit?
You know, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Muckel, but I will tell you that, one, you know, we have weekly meetings with each other, the reporting out is still occurring, you know, where I, and bi-weekly, and tell the board, either written or verbal fashion about what's occurring here in the school. And they've actually been part of the process in terms of approving and learning about all of the different components. So, I've even presented my goals, as well as the school goals. I also presented our new educator evaluation plan that went through with the union support, and then also was voted on by the board. And then also, the school improvement plan was also presented at the LADS board meeting. So, I'm really, I think for the, you know, this is one of the first times, of course, but now the board is really seeing how everything's connected in a straight line vertically from the board goals, which are, you know, executive director goals, down to our school goals and down to the teacher goals. So, I'll let Mr. Muckel speak more about that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Spira. From the board's perspective, I think that we have a better lane of communication with the executive director than we've had in the past. As Dr. Spira has noted, we now have his goals, school goals, and I try to be here in the building on a regular basis. We meet, discuss issues, and it acts as a better line of communication for the board director. I've been on the board here at Isaac for, I don't know, except for one year, it's 11 or 12 years, and I had a gap year along the way. So, I've seen a lot of different perspectives of the executive director, and I can tell you by far, the situation that we have today is far better than I've ever experienced in the 11 or 12 years that I've been involved here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I look forward, I look forward to my site visit on Monday as well, so we can see this all in action.
And Lisa, I paid him no money to say that, Lisa. I promise you. I did not slip a 20 anywhere. There's no chicken parm, nothing.
Especially when this is being recorded, Dr. Spira.
Right, right, right.
Dr. Spira, could you explain a little how your school works as a bilingual school, what that actually means?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, once you have a number of English language, or English learners in your school, and once you have over 20 that speak the same language, then the State of Connecticut designates your school as a bilingual school. Along with additional funds, also comes kind of the responsibility to ensure that you're doing your part for these speakers. And so, you really should have someone in a position that is bilingual certifier, bilingual support, that speaks that specific language to help the development of the students. So, you're required to do that. Well, one thing is, I wanted to go above and beyond, and kind of what Dr. Lopez was talking about, is something that I want to do. I want to be like, sort of the model in terms of what we do, and we do all hands on deck for our students. And if we say all students, it means all students. So, we've actually hired, and this is the support of the board to support this, we've actually hired two more bilingual assistants to be with these students, and to really have, along with a T-Sol teacher and two bilingual assistants, one specific for each grade. And so, we really believe that that's our best way to get these students to feel that, hey, it's okay to ask that question in Spanish, and to hear what that is in Spanish while learning the language. And so, research has shown that that bilingual piece really is what's important. And again, Dr. Lopez, you said it best, these kids are going to be at such an advantage when they're getting that education, they're going to be bilingual. Like, I wish, I wish my father kept me in Spanish, you know, he let me leave in Spanish too. But these kids are going to be so successful, I wish, I wish I could do it. And so, you know, we want to support them. And so, if they're a little bit behind because they're learning along the way, we're going to make sure that that's not a deterrent in the other areas which we speak all the languages in. And so, we want to make sure that we're really supporting those students the best we can.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Spira. And thank you for coming and for your team, for your board chair to be here. And we're looking forward to, again, you continuing to advance, and we're going to, we plan to see you maybe, hopefully, face-to-face in the spring. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, next item, the Great Oaks.
Thank you. So, if our Great Oaks crew can join with your cameras, I will go ahead and get started. So, next, we have Great Oaks Charter School. Great Oaks opened in 2014. They serve students in grades six through 11. Joining us here today, we have Principal John Scalise and Board Chairperson Susan Briggs. I have also invited our talent office representatives to the remaining portion of this meeting as it pertains to certification compliance. Great Oaks was last renewed in March of 2019 for a term of two years with conditions including corrective action in the areas of minimizing suspensions, improving chronic absenteeism, and academic performance, and lastly, being in 100% certification compliance by October 31, 2020. Throughout that time, Great Oaks has worked with the Turnaround Office and several other offices, including the Talent Office, to evaluate impact of the corrective action plan through regular reporting, conference calls, and site visits. If you recall, Great Oaks was due to come before the board this year. However, due to the implications of the pandemic, we have extended the eligible school an additional year. So, as a result, Great Oaks is here to share the progress updates. Similar to what I said, Isaac data was limited, but on the one pager that was shared with you, I'd like to note that suspension has improved from 28.1% in 1718 to 15% last year, and currently, a self-reported rate of 0% this year, year-to-date. And progress has also been made with certification compliance from 41% in February of 2019 to now 71.1% as of 11/6. I would like to state that these are not final percentages. They are still being calculated as the applications are continuing to be reviewed by the Talent Office. We plan on bringing Great Oaks back before accountability and support this spring. But in the meantime, once those certification compliance percentages have been fully updated, I will update the committee and send you those percentages. So, at this point, I would like to welcome Mr. Scalise to give you a bit more detail. And Mr. Scalise, if you can introduce a few of the other folks that you have brought with you today, too. And Mr. Scalisi, if you can introduce a few of the other folks that you have brought with you today too.
Absolutely a pleasure. So as previously noted, we have our board chair, Susan Briggs. Attendee 21 is our Director of Operations, Latoya Hubbard. And attendee 20 is our Executive Vice President from our foundation and a ton of support for the school, and that's Josh Thomases. So with that, I do have an opening statement. If I could actually find it in the screen, pardon me for a second, sorry. Sometimes it's easier to just have a stack of papers in front of you. Honorable members of the board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to meet again regarding the progress made at Great Oaks Charter School in Bridgeport. Over the past year, we have seen a lot of changes. Some due to the pandemic and created out of a course for student safety, but some through our corrective action plans and our desire to better serve our students in our community. We have viewed these recent events as a way to create technological equity through device distribution, working with community partners and with our local Wi-Fi providers prior to state deals to ensure all of our students had internet access, developed social and emotional programs to engage our students in a virtual setting, changed our operational model to allow for more small group check-ins with students, and often seeing our teachers go well and above the beyond and beyond their contracted workday and still manage to see progress in academics through our NWEA assessments. Our focus on the whole student has not changed, but the way we articulate it has. By focusing on what we can control instead of the chaos created by COVID, we implemented daily attendance team meetings to closely monitor students appearing online, developed interactive contests to continue a sense of school spirit and pride, created a summer learning academy for all students to engage in extended learning opportunities and avoid summer slide, have switched from cobbled together apps and platforms to a learning management system that allows for easy access and single sign-on for students. We have increased our communication to families through daily video announcements about what is going on in the school, video tutorials on how to sign on, monitor progress, and evening and daytime town halls to show parents and loved ones how to navigate our systems, contact and meet with teachers and administrations, and even how to order breakfast and lunch through our school. And we've also done these in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. We also show our parents and students that it wasn't just COVID we are responding to. With so much social change around us, we wanted to make sure that our students understood that they could still be involved safely to make a difference. We hosted student sessions for social awareness for processing the events of George Floyd and other senseless acts of violence. We hosted a joint town hall with members from Bridgeport Police Department, local representatives, and students to address community concerns and fears and provided a safe space for necessary conversations to occur. In supporting our students, we also realized we needed to change the way that we support our staff. Technology challenges, updates, changes to schedules, all of these things add additional stress to staff in addition to the challenges they were facing at home as well. Changing the professional development focus to how we can engage with our students online, what tools are available, and also promoting teacher social interactions like trivia nights and hangouts. Self-care became a huge part of how we built our bond together. Offering professional development sessions at the beginning of the year on how to develop community online with Dr. Freiberg, promoting engagement by our foundation partners or learning a new platform with experts from Power School and Schoology, we continue to make sure that our teachers are prepared for what is ahead of them. We feel we've done a lot to meet our goals of our extensive corrective action plan, but we know we still have a lot of work to do in order to live up to the great that begins our school's name. However, with the continued support of our families, foundation, and our thought partners at the charter office that have been very helpful, we believe we are on a course to make the needed gains for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Erin, do you have any, any questions you want to ask? Principal Scalisi?
This might be a question for you, Lisa. The suspension rate for 1920, how come it's self-reported for school year 1920? I mean, I understand this year, but why is 1920 self-reported?
It's not out yet. It should be out very soon.
Oh, okay, okay.
But from the head site, from our performance office.
I do, I do want to address the, you're probably not surprised, the certification requirement. You didn't really mention that in your opening statement. I believe it was September of 2020 that they were supposed to be at a hundred percent compliance. Is that correct, Lisa?
October, October 31st, yep.
And again, it's a self, we don't really know if it's actual, but it was 71%. Could you address that, what's being done in that area, please?
Absolutely. So we have been having continuous meetings with Sharon Fuller and with Rob Kelly to update progress. We unfortunately got caught in a avalanche of paperwork that went to the CSDE. We still are waiting on some of our applications to finalize being processed that were submitted in August of this year for hires made towards the end of summer. Right now, as we went through everybody that's on our roster with Sharon and Rob Kelly, everybody right now has an application at the office that's waiting to be processed. We believe we have submitted all of our information that is required for certification, and we believe that that number will reflect a hundred percent.
Okay.
And so, so let me make sure that I understand. We're thinking that once the certification office completes its processes, that you'll reach the hundred percent?
Without a doubt.
Okay, you're being taped.
I understand. This, this, to be very transparent, this was something that we really put a ton of effort into. And I hate to say this, but you know, we did let some, some of our staff go that did, were not able to meet the requirements. We had to make the changes even at the beginning of the year about that. We, we are not, we did not take the, the, the board statements last year lightly regarding certification. And we are doing everything within our control to make sure that that's a hundred percent.
Okay, we appreciate that. Okay. Erin, anything else?
I mean, I appreciate that too. And I do hope, you know, when that report comes out that we'll see that. Because that was, that was a big concern for this committee. So I look forward to seeing that coming out. Thank you.
Anything else, Erin? Okay, Woody or, or Bonnie? Bonnie, you have your microphone on?
Sure. So you talked about the fact that you still have things left to go on your, on your corrective action plan. What are the next things that you see of the greatest importance? And how are you going to approach those?
So I think with, with anything else, the, the two major buckets we're always looking at are our academic curriculum development and our delivery of instruction. Right? So that has been our primary focus over the last two years. Understanding that we have had staff turnover over time, it became very important for us to develop what we call the Great Oaks way of doing school. Right? So that no matter what teachers are coming in, there is a very structured format for how lessons are delivered, for how our curriculum undergoes a review process, for the way that we onboard staff. So at first, when we first started our corrective action, a large part of our time was around unpacking standards, making sure that our curriculum was standards aligned, making sure that we had standards-aligned assessments in place, making use of tools like Mastery Connect and making tool, sense of tools like Exact Path that we have now that monitors progress directly aligned to standards. The next step in that has been separating the parts of a lesson or the cadence of a lesson to make sure that our students are not being lectured at for long periods of time, making sure that they have time to struggle and wrestle with the material, and then making sure that that material is rigorous and is increasing their ability to perform. This year, what we're really looking at is refining the elements of that small group instruction. So we were able to get the, the higher view, large group instruction to a nice point where it wasn't extending past the 15 or 18-minute mark, where our teachers were able to transition into small groups. But now let's really leverage that small group time with very concretized station work, even at the high school model. Are they working on their academic vocabulary? Are they working on guided reading practices? Are they answering deeper questions and working to solve real-life challenges? So that's where a lot of our focus has been since the beginning of this year, to make sure that we're getting to that point and now rounding out our model.
Okay, thank you.
Woody?
Mr. Scalisi, what have you been doing to, that enabled you to reduce your suspension rate so much?
Community building and, and connections with adults. I, I, before I came here, I used to do a lot of extensive work with Joanne Freiberg when I was at Milford. And I did a lot of restorative practice work when I was in New York City. I believe in community building. I believe in trusted adults. I believe that students do not respond positively simply to punitive practices. It destroys community. And when, when we first came here as a team, I'm, I'm very actually proud of the fact that our leadership team together is on year three. So it's, we've had a lot of consistency in, in moving these initiatives forward that we said, you know, students should not be getting suspended for things like insubordination. Students should not be getting suspended for things like talking out of turn or not having a pencil or whatever some of the ridiculous reasons were. And that there are solutions to these through community building, through developing relationships with teachers, and by spending time teaching our teachers how to meet our students where they are, to bring them out, to implement an advisory program, to implement a seminar program, to have community meetings at the school level where students get to voice some of their concerns about what they're learning, how they're learning, and to not take it as, oh, our, our students hate school. It's, no, we're here to serve our students. And if our students are telling us something isn't working, we need to take that into consideration. So by providing student voice, and as soon as we started to, to have two-way conversation with our students, we started to see immediate drops in suspensions. We started to see immediate drops in frustrations with our teachers because now they're partnering with our students. So I, I think it's been a large shift to that model. This year, one of the things that I will tell you is we have not been virtual all year. We are currently because of the outbreak in, in Bridgeport. But we've had students and a high percentage of our students all year, and we have not had a suspension this year. So it, it's not because we're not suspending. It's because our students are coming in and working with our teachers. We also have a process where teachers can ask for mediations with students who may be somewhat disruptive in class. But students can also ask for mediations to occur between themselves and teachers if they feel they're being singled out in class, if they feel that they're not being treated fairly. So again, it's that two-way communication that is just so important. And, and I think that's the overwhelming piece of what has driven those suspensions down.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Woody? Okay, thank you. I, I want to thank Mr. Scalisi and your board chair, Susan Briggs, for coming today. We, we know how important it is for the board chair to be supportive of the NEI plans that require improvement. And your part of your team, also Latoya Hubbard and Josh Thomases. I'm very fortunate because for whatever reason, my screen shows your name. I don't see you as attendee 22 or 23 or, or 50. So I'm very glad that I can see your names and your faces. You talk about the daily attendance. I'm interested because of going back and forth, the daily attendance approach that you're using for remote learning. Could you talk a little bit about that and how is that working?
Sure. So we, we switched over from what a lot of schools ran to, which was Google Classroom. We switched over to a Schoology platform, which links then directly with Power School. So anything that our teachers enter into Power School gets fed back into, anything that enters to Schoology gets fed, passed back into Power School. So all of our attendance is taken period, period-wise. That it's inclusive of middle school as well as high school. So this way, we have a very accurate track of whether students are appearing or not. What we then do is we run reports the next day that shows us whether or not students decided to engage in the classrooms asynchronously. So we do allow students to not participate in real time because we do know in some of our household, there's shared devices. We do know that in some of our households, that it's just not possible for a student to sit in front of their computer for all their synchronous classes. So our classes are taped through Big Blue Button. Students can go back and watch them at any time. We also have scheduled check-ins throughout the day with our AmeriCorps volunteers. So if they are not able to touch base with a teacher, they have a tutor that they can touch base with also. We, we really try to make it possible for our students to attend in any way imaginable. We look at everywhere from single touchpoints with work submitted to four or more touchpoints with participation in class. And right now for October, our average daily attendance rate between our online students and our in-school students was 97%.
Good, good. Very, very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. In terms of the academics, what else are you doing? How, what is your expectations regarding areas for, the areas where you'll be more successful in improving the academic side of the, the school?
So ELA math, obviously big concern. So we, we have engaged in new platforms for mathematics, new programs. What we found was we were using an out-of-the-box program for math the last couple of years. It was not meeting the needs of our school. So while we were using that, that program, we were unboxing our own program. Looking at, at that point now, we have historical data of our students coming into us from our host district, seeing very established patterns of where they're not performing well. So instead of waiting for our initial data run of NWEs estimates to tell us what we already know historically, we built that into the curriculum. So from day one, our students are starting some of that recovery work so that we can then spiral them up to the standards they need now. A big area that we've been able to opportuneize, opportuneize? I guess that's a new made-up word. To make opportunity of is using some of our virtual platform to really assist our special education students in our ELL population. So through the ability to use a program like GoGuardian, which allows a student to stream typical classroom, but also have a separate chat with an adult, we're able to offer students real-time assistance without it getting cluttered in, in a chat room or interrupting other students' process. So we've made a big effort to recruit more bilingual fellows this year, AmeriCorps fellows, to assist our bilingual population. So while they're in class watching something in real time, they're able to ask questions in native language to the fellows who are also on a separate platform to get real-time assistance. So this has been something that regardless of what happens in terms of like going back to full normal school, we're going to make use of this ability in, in a, in a, in a hybrid model or in a joint model because we are seeing some great responses from our students who don't have to wait 15 or 20 minutes to have a side conversation with a push-in teacher. So it reduces the amount of misinformation from point A to point B. We're also seeing with our special education students that they're less apt to ask a question to the open class, but use the side chat to ask the question of their special ed provider. So they're getting what they need in the way that they're comfortable. So we've seen some great opportunities for growth there. And then we also have offered additional hours besides mandated hours for our students to meet with teachers and to meet with fellows for extra help, for pre-morning help for both ESL students and for special ed population because people don't have to drive to work. And they volunteer, they're like, listen, I could sit at my table for a half hour before school quote-unquote starts and work with these kids. So it's, it's really been a blessing. What we've also done, just to make sure that we can continue that when we go back to normal, if that does occur, is we did actually hire some online-only teachers who they, they do stream into classes for assistance, but the majority of their work is content creation for other students who need additional help, but then also running some extra help clubs.
Okay, good. Thank you. We appreciate the fact that you have a very committed, it seems, to addressing the items in the correction plan. And we do look forward to the new data or the updated data regarding certification. And, and again, we look forward to seeing you in, in the springtime. Lisa, do you have any, any? And, and again, we look forward to seeing you in, in the springtime. Lisa, do you have any, any additional comments or questions for, uh, uh, Great Oaks?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Great Oaks team.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And please stay safe. Okay, thank you so much for coming.
It's always so great seeing all of you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we go to the, yeah.
Yes, we are on the last agenda item and I'm just making sure that everyone from Achievement First. There is Deisha. Hi, Deisha.
Hi, Deisha.
Deisha, can you give me a thumbs up if you think everyone from your team is here so we can get started?
You're muted, Deisha. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, good. Hi, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I can see most of our team. Scott was doing the all-call to join a few minutes early, but we can go ahead and get started, Lisa.
Great.
Okay.
Dr. Lopez, can we get started?
Absolutely, absolutely, please.
Great. So the last agenda item is Achievement First and their four schools. Achievement First Bridgeport, Achievement First Hartford, Amistad, and Elm City College Prep. Joining us here today is co-CEO and President Deisha Toll. Lori Busman, VP of Operations and Technology. We also have the principals from each of the schools to address any school-level questions you might have. With the exception of Principal Williams. Thank you to Principal Obas, Principal Lucky, and Principal Adams for joining us. We also have Scott Kerr here, and I believe that might be it. So in addition to the Talent Office representatives, we also have Megan Eluvikey Flick here as well through the lens of the bilingual programming. On October twenty-ninth and thirtieth, the charter team and I had the pleasure of joining AF Bridgeport Elementary and AF Hartford Summit Middle School for a virtual classroom visit. We were very pleased to see a high level of engagement and the immense efforts of the teachers and staff to translate the AF high expectations that we know and engagement into the remote setting. So I just wanted to take a moment, moment to acknowledge those classrooms and teachers and those principals that we met with. The focus of today's meeting is to provide an update in the areas of certification, bilingual, and team. Before, before turning it over to Achievement First, I'd also like to take the opportunity to commend Achievement First on their collaboration and receptiveness throughout this year, as well as some of the systematic changes that have been made around these focus areas. So thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to you, Deisha, and you can go ahead and move forward with the agenda.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. It's nice to be with you all, albeit virtually. And we really enjoyed hosting the team from the State Department recently for school in its current incarnation. So we heard the message loud and clear from the board in our most recent renewals about the need to continue to address what have been longstanding issues. And I am happy actually to be here with you today to report not just what I think is substantial progress, but actually milestones achieved in a number of the target areas that you all identified. And it really has been done in partnership with a number of folks from the, from the State Department. They've been great partners to us. And I just, by way of context, I think we all know that, but our team has been working hard on these, on these items while reinventing school. In the midst of a global pandemic, of course, remote learning, remote community, and then we did reopen with hybrid instruction this fall. And nevertheless, despite all of that added complexity, we have been meeting religiously every two weeks as a team to continue working on the issues that the board identified for us in the most recent renewals. So I'll give the high level on, on certification and then I will have, I'll turn it over to others. But in terms of certification, the board said we want a hundred percent certified. You all have in front of you numbers that are not quite yet there. Because we still have applications pending with the department. We have been working closely with them. As I'm sure you all know from other contexts, they have had a lot of applications to deal with. They've had to move all their systems remotely on themselves. And so there have been folks who have been applied, have to apply a couple of times, and things that have gone missing. But according to our records, and we've gotten awful good at vetting certification. We actually think two of our schools, when those applications are processed, which we hope will happen in the coming weeks. Are actually a hundred percent certified, both Elm City and AF Bridgeport. And we believe Amistad and AF Hartford are at ninety-nine percent certified. One has one teacher on a DECEPT that just expired. Another has a half a computer science teacher that's waiting on test results. This is the level of detail that we're all in, tracking teacher by teacher by teacher across all these schools, all of the different components. But I think whether you use the, the numbers that are in front of you right now from the department or what we believe to be our numbers, I think this represents, again, substantial progress. And I think despite all the many conditions, either a milestone achieved or incredibly close to achieved. I'm going to let my teammates talk more about certification and about bilingual and team as well. I just wanted to make a note about suspensions. That was not because we'd made substantial progress. That was not actually a condition of our renewal. But I do hope you all see the continued work we've done to reduce suspensions. We did multiple years ago agree to a corrective action plan with the board and we have consistently outperformed every milestone and gotten, I think, to much lower and more acceptable levels of suspension. Obviously, it's an unusual year we're having, but we've not had a single suspension at any of our schools all year as well. So we are proud of the work we've done on that front. And I'll turn it over now to Samantha Lucky, who's the principal of AF Bridgeport Elementary, to talk more about the certification progress.
Thank you.
Samantha, do you mind if I just jump in one second? Thank you. Apologize. Deisha and the entire team, I do want to let you know that I did let the board know about the pending applications that were still in review prior to you getting on because we had another school in the similar boat.
Right.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this Go meeting is very high-tech, very cool. Hi, everyone. I'm Samantha Lucky. Really glad to be with you all today. To echo some of what Deisha has already said. Principals, we heard loud and clear from the board, and from this board rather, that we had to do some more on-the-ground work in our leadership to really meet our certification goal and to reach a hundred percent. And so just to speak to a little bit of what we've done between this time last year and now. We've had really increased our focus on certification, yes, over the past several years, but especially last year. And we feel really proud of the action that we took to help with the success. And so some of the steps that we ta- took is that we ensure that teachers who were not close to being certified, that unfortunately we had to not renew them. And while Achievement First, and we did a lot in supporting those folks, we had to make that clear stance to really show how clear we were being about how important certification is. And then for teachers that were renewed or hired this year only if they were already certified. Or if we were really sure and guaranteed they'd be certified by October. Whether that meant within a few points of passing the test or receiving some sort of certification, we were able to make that call. We also made sure to support our teachers over the summer despite the pandemic to ensure that they received the support that they needed to go to certification classes, to get the tutoring that they needed in order to pass the test. And as a last resort, after all those other things were done. We, as principals, along with the rest of our teams, made a decision to terminate or remove teachers who were not certified by October fifteenth. And so it was definitely a team effort. And I would say, yes, as principals, but also with network support staff and the CDE staff, we were able to tackle this. And we are proud of the traction we have made, not just over the past several years, but more recently this year. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deisha, who's?
Hi. Hi, I'm Rhiannon Kogan. It's nice to meet all of you. I'm the new district facilitator for Team. And I, so I'm going to speak a little bit about how Team is going. First of all, I want to say Claudine has been super helpful in creating a systematic and like streamlined approach. And like, we completely overhauled our team program at AF, which I think has been super beneficial. And I know that she started that work with Gina, and then when I came on, she's been very helpful in supporting me and answering my questions. So with her support, we do have one hundred percent of new teachers assigned to mentors. We recruited twenty-seven new mentors this year, and because of that, no mentor has more than two teachers assigned to them. And we have a bunch of mentors who either are not assigned to any teachers right now, or they're only assigned to one. So we have plenty of people ready to mentor teachers who might come into the Team, Team program mid-year, which is super helpful. All mentors have received orientation at this point, and we did have our first Team cohort meeting last week. We had one hundred percent of, one hundred percent attendance at that meeting. Because we're leveraging our Friday PD time that already exists to have teachers come to that. So all of the teachers were able to complete their first professional growth action plan of the year. And are underway in their first, you know, eight-to-ten-week module. So we're making really good traction there. And yeah, and like I said, just Claudine has been super helpful in response of any question I have. She's been able to answer, and I feel very supported by, by her. And I think that we're really on a good pathway with Team at AF.
Good. Thank you.
So I'm here to talk about our.
Go ahead.
I'm here to talk about our bilingual programming. And since the last board meeting, when we were all together, Achievement First and us have worked hard to both meet this goal and have a long-term approach as well. So with the SDE, we developed both a short-term and long-term approach for supporting our ELL students with both bilingual or TSL certified teachers. In the short term, we aggressively were looking and recruiting for TSL or bilingual teachers. I'm proud to say we have hired a TSL certified teacher over the summer and they're in our school now. In addition, we updated and have implemented a new bilingual program that was also reviewed and approved by the State Department. On our longer-term, one-year plan. We wanted to build an ongoing pipeline for our existing teachers to become TSL or bilingual certified. So that we had not only more than we could hire externally, but a long-term plan for supporting our ELLs. And with that, I'm happy to say after the SDE's advice for partnering with the ArcTel program. We have put fourteen teachers, or we have fourteen teachers enrolled in the ArcTel program right now. And that means by the end of this year, they will be certified in either TSL or bilingual. And that just helps us both build support for our teachers next year. And we plan to do this on an ongoing basis where we're helping to bring in more teachers into that program. And so that concludes all the updates from Achievement First. Lisa or the board, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask my fellow board members if they have questions. And Ari, I want to start with you again.
Sure. Wow. A lot of changes, and I'm so thrilled to see them, see them all. You know, the certification and, you know, I know a lot of these things aren't solid, but, you know, as far as all the suspensions, even though, Deisha, I know you said wasn't part of it, kudos, that, that is one of the things that are coming in very strong. But the certification, the things that we were concerned, Team facilitator, I think that's just fantastic. And having mentors for all those new teachers is just fantastic. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ari. Bonnie?
Can you just speak again? And I'll apologize if I was just trying to get everything. I'm, I'm very new to this committee. Can you talk a little bit about the professional, more on the professional development opportunities that you're looking to, to increase on?
I can, I can jump in here and then Rhiannon, you're, you're free to, to follow up. So at Achievement First, we've always been incredibly committed to professional development. We know that effective teachers and effective leaders are the key ingredient in terms of doing right by the young people we work with. And so we've always had extensive professional development, weeks in the summer. Four weeks for new teachers and then two weeks for all returning teachers. And then every Friday, as Rhiannon said, we dismiss early and do professional development. The problem that we've had, and then there's extensive coaching. Most teachers are observed weekly by a coach and get feedback. The problem that we had is that the Team program existed outside of all of those structures. And we didn't adequately support it. So our teachers were kind of left to do Team on their own or with mentors who frankly had too many mentees, too many Team members to support. And it felt like an add-on on top of our teachers already worked very intense days and weeks. And then they would have to do the modules above and beyond. And so what Gina and Rhiannon from our team, when Claudine were able to do is to say, that doesn't make any sense. Our folks are actually doing the work and receiving much of the training, coaching, and support they should. But we need these two, two things to line up and speak to each other. And so now they have actually taken that Friday professional development time and created a Team cohort. And the mentors and the mentees meet during that time. The modules they have to complete are baked into their professional development coaching. Their mentoring is baked into their Achievement First professional development and coaching as much as possible. And we have a very talented, finally, Team facilitator at a district level who's taking it very seriously and overseeing the whole thing. And so I'm sorry it was such a long time coming. But we've now made, I think, the more fundamental shifts we had to make at a systems level to make this frankly easier for our wonderful teachers to do what they need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woody, you have any questions?
Yes, regarding the certification. What are the reasons, the main reasons why some of the teachers are not certified? Is it that, that they don't pass the Praxis test or what?
Woody, Woody, if you don't mind, Deja, I'll, I'll jump in real quick and then you feel free to kind of jump in after. I think one of the things that the, the members of the committee do need to be aware is that last month, the certification office discovered that we had an, an issue with our email address, which was the teacher.cert@ctgov address that we were using to, when we adopted to accept documentation and applications from districts in the virtual remote environment. We were relying solely on that email address as the through line for districts to submit applications to us. So last month, we, we found that some of those emails weren't actually getting to us. So districts such as AF and, and other districts were receiving a confirmation from the system. But the email was never actually landing in the inbox. And so we've been working really closely with IT and best at the state level to, to resolve. One, to identify what the issue was and how to resolve that. And so some of the applications that, that Deja is referencing were submitted. We weren't ever aware that they were submitted. And so now we've worked with AF along with a number of other districts to resubmit and to show those original submission dates. So that once we have all the paperwork and it's processed, we can go back into the system and backdate to the original date of the application submission. So I, you know, I think some of it right now typically certification processing is in, in slow times, as far as six weeks. In busy times, it's six to eight weeks. And during pandemic, like, I'm really proud of our team. We're keeping it right around that like six-to-ten-week margin, depending on how much additional documentation is needed. So, you know, I think, you know, a, a team of seven has processed seventy-three hundred applications since July first, which is just unheard of in kind of the remote environment. And so I, I just want to make sure, you know, I know Alicia, or, excuse me, Lisa gave some credit to Deja earlier. But, you know, I think their numbers are showing growth and, you know, Julianne is working really closely with AF to make sure that, you know, those outstanding applications or those feeling where applicants were submitted, but we weren't aware of, that we're making sure that we have the appropriate documentation to process those.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good things about Julianne. Lori, were you also going to, so I think one thing that was just highlighted is some of the folks we do believe should be certified are, are, have completed everything they need. But it's just they're still working their way through the system because of a delay that happened because the applications we thought were submitted and weren't. Lori, can you speak to some of the other challenges that our teachers are facing?
Yeah, I think to the question of, is it that they can't pass the test? And the answer is no. We have, there is only one halftime teacher. He's halftime chemistry and halftime computer science who has taken the computer science test last month, and we're just waiting for those test results. Every, there is not another teacher in our system who needs to pass a test. We carefully tracked who was taking the test, what their scores were. And painfully, either non-renewed teachers who could not pass the test last. and painfully either non-renewed teachers who could not pass the test last year were too far away, or have removed them from their positions or terminated them on October 15th if they still were unable to pass those tests. So the only teachers besides that one computer science teacher, which we're hoping that he has passed, um, and we will deal with that correctively after, if, if by any chance he doesn't. Um, everybody is just a paperwork application has been submitted and is waiting to go through. And we have, that obviously limits our pool, but we have done that deliberately, so we could hit our 100% goal. We don't have anybody that is lagging in any testing.
May, maybe at the risk of speaking too long to this, but I think it's important. Um, if we go back in time, Achievement First, I think, struggled with certification, because we had, uh, what we believe were very talented and effective teachers who could not pass the test. Um, and so we provided, uh, we had a, a chapter, which we provided extensive test prep, which we still do, and that did help a number of them to pass the test. Uh, but there still are some that, uh, frankly, we believe are effective and, uh, cannot pass the test. And we can have more of a conversation about that if you'd like. Some of it has to do with the way we departmentalize teachers. So at elementary, um, they'll just teach math, uh, but understandably, the state's requirements to give them an elementary certification are that they pass the test, not just in math, but in every one of the elementary certifications. So, uh, elementary subject area tests. So, but, uh, we've respected, of course, the state policy, regulations, and laws, and have complied with them. But I will say it has been challenging. Um, and when Samantha spoke to what our principals have had to do, uh, we, after many years, let go teachers who, um, frankly, we thought were serving our students well. But we had clearly reached a point of no return with the state, and we heard that message loud and clear. There is a backdrop here, uh, with teacher diversity. We have made a huge commitment over the last several years to significantly increasing the percentage of our teachers that are Black and Latinx. Um, I'm pleased to say now those folks are certified, uh, but that was a long journey working in partnership with Relay and others to make sure they had the credentials they need to continue in the profession.
Woody, do you have any other questions?
Um, with the bilingual, uh, program, uh, do you actually have English language classes? How does that work?
Um, we have, we have mostly, the department has looked through our programming and approved it. Uh, for the most part, while there's some supplemental support, we have an inclusion program, uh, which is heavy on the components that have been shown to work, uh, for our non-native speakers, including, uh, direct instruction phonics, lots of embedded whole language, um, vocab, explicit vocabulary, instruction, lots of opportunities to speak and listen. And so they have, um, for the most part, it's inclusion with supplemental supports as, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Deja, uh, thank you very, very much for, uh, coming before us with, um, in all the areas that we had pointed out to you that needed improvement and, um, demonstrating your commitment to ensuring that they were much better when you came, uh, to this meeting. Um, I'm, I'm delighted, like, uh, Erin expressed, I'm, I'm delighted. I'm also delighted that you brought your team with you. We appreciate seeing everybody that is working together with you for the, uh, ensure the students are learning and, and doing well. And, um, I also want to thank you, because you've always been very welcoming in terms of inviting us to visit the schools. And when Lisa said that she had a wonderful visit with you, I got very jealous. I said, now, you know, I cannot do that. Um, so I hope that, you know, once schools are open again, and we have a live again, normal, normal stimulus, we can continue to, to be invited, um, to see the work that you're doing in, in your schools. Uh, we are, again, looking forward to seeing, um, the percentages, final percentages. And we do believe that you're going to be, uh, meeting what we have set out to, uh, for you. So we, we, again, we're very, um, uh, thankful for that. And, um, and also the suspensions, you know, I'm, I'm just delighted to hear that. That's, that's, um, very nice. I think we all want to see Achievement First be the model that it is and continue to, to be, um, eh, again, uh, serving the students here in Connecticut the way they deserve to be served. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Can I just say, Dr. Lopez and anyone else, um, in a virtual world, it is actually easier to visit a school than it was, uh, maybe in the pre, maybe slightly less satisfying, although wait till you see some of the extraordinary classes, um, uh, in our school. So, I'll just say, the invitation is still open. Um, and at our, we are running, um, pending on, on what happens with case counts, uh, both remote and hybrid instruction, but our remote instruction, I should have said this by way of intro, uh, was actually cited by a number of national studies as best-in-class, and we would, we would really love to have you all come in and, of course, give us critical feedback as well. So that invitation's still open. And I guess I just want to, uh, in the spirit of the gratitude that's being expressed, again, thank, um, the STE staff, and also thank this board. I mean, we're very aware that the opportunity to run a charter school in the state of Connecticut is granted by this board. It is one we take very seriously, uh, and we're very honored to continue to do this work.
Thank you, Deja. Uh, I think we, we don't want to just, um, eh, visit by whim. I think, you know, Lisa has always coordinated that opportunity for us, because I, I know you're very busy and you're trying to do your best in very difficult times. So I would say, if Lisa has, um, that opportunity, she usually invites us to, to join her, and, you know, we will work on that. But I appreciate it. I think that, that's a great, um, way to see it. But there's nothing like seeing the smiles on the kids, on the students, you know, face-to-face. That, that, um, that is invaluable. But again, uh, thank you. Lisa, any, any comment, any other comments, anything else?
I would be happy to coordinate a visit, Scott. That means you and I need to work together on, uh, putting together a visit again. Um, but I just want to echo the sentiments made by just about everyone here today. Um, the immense efforts from not only the folks that are on this call with, um, on Achievement First side, but all the folks that are from your team that have been working really tirelessly, not only throughout this pandemic, but around these areas. Um, so please extend our thanks to them as well. And, um, also to the offices at the department, the Talent Office. I know the amount of work that, actually, I don't. I'll, I'll say, I don't know the amount of work that it takes, and I always defer to you all. So I want to take this moment to thank them, um, with the leadership of Chris Todd and Dr. Shawna Tucker. We have Julianne Frost, um, Claudine, um, Primak, and Sharon Fuller. There's a lot of time and effort that go into this, and I didn't want that to go unnoticed. Um, and of course, I have, um, the charter team, uh, the trio, Robert, Felicia, and Shakira. Thank you for all your efforts. And I would just say, to continue with this sense of urgency, um, a lot of progress has been made. So learn from these lessons learned and the progress made, um, and continue to, continue to shine.
Right, absolutely. And stay safe. So thank you so much, and we, eh, we're not going to adjourn yet. I, I want to say a few things before we, we adjourn, so, uh, but Deja, thank you, and to everyone in your team, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa, I, I know that I reenjoyed because I can see her name. I don't, I see her, not as a 10D24 or whatever, but I see her name in, in the hiring. So, thank you. Lisa, I wanted to officially, I think we need to officially thank your team, because we're seeing a lot of progress being made in, in, uh, schools that have a lot of challenges. So I know that that happens with intentionality and, and, uh, and good work. So I wanted to officially thank them while they're present, so.
Please show your faces, team.
Yeah, I want to see, I want to see.
Please, you know, I see with, uh, like, what a, this was, um, this was a great meeting for, just seeing the accomplishments here. Good.
And I think we lost, uh, Robert and Felicia, um, but yes, thank you very much.
Please, thank them. And, and for Bonnie and, and Woody, eh, Erin and I are veterans of these schools coming in front of us and not wanting to do any of this work. So, um, eh, yeah, it's, we, we can talk a little bit later, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we thank your team, and, um, we know that this doesn't happen in a vacuum, that it's a lot of effort given. So now I am ready to, to adjourn, and I, because I do want to have a conversation with Woody and Erin, if they're available, and, um, and Bonnie. So we log in, and then we log back in again, okay? Okay, and thanks. So I have to, I, you know, I'm supposed to say move for, um, you know, adjournment, but I'm not going to say any of that, so that's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm taking some power. Thank you. See you.
We should lock, lock down and then lock back in?
Right.